Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 24th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number Navarada?
Yes.
Number Blight?
Abstained.
Number Blatt?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our update from Vicky Spitz, our student representative. Good evening, Vicky.
Hi, everyone. So today, I'm going to start with a sports update. There's only one game left for the girls' basketball season, and it's Friday against Southbridge. And the boys' basketball team has their senior night on this Thursday at home against Southbridge. And the girls' senior night was actually last night against Tantascwa. We lost, but it was still a very hard-fought battle, and we celebrated with seniors. And the boys are going to have a tournament over February break, and it's going to start this weekend. And then, there was a lot of school testing the last couple of weeks at Bartlett. There have been mock exams for AP classes, access testing, and MCAS biology retakes. Both AP Lit and AP Lang took their mock exams last week.
Great. Thanks for your updates, Vicky.
Thank you.
Any questions for Vicky from the committee? No? All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations on a great basketball season, too, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda, we're actually going to go a bit out of order. We're going to move over down to new business because we have a packed house tonight, and we want to be considerate of everyone's time. So next on the agenda, we're going to go to item B under new business, which is approval of an out-of-state field trip, grades five and six, to Lou's Center for Arts in Woodstock, Connecticut. Oh, that's not, that's not the item that you wanted to do first, is it?
No, no, it is.
Oh, okay.
Am I on?
Yes. Yep.
Thanks for moving the agenda around. Melinda, do you want to speak a little bit about this trip?
I think Melinda's the next one. That's what I'm realizing. Melinda C.
Okay, so let me just do that in order.
Sorry about that.
Find it. I need my glasses. Okay, this is a trip that Glenn Wright is requesting to take the students to see Mozart's Magic Flute on March 28th. This is an out-of-state trip, which requires the school committee to approve. Students will return in time for lunch.
Great. Any discussion from the committee about this? Sure sounds like a great opportunity.
It does.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this out-of-state field trip.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number Navarada?
Yes.
Number Blight?
Yes.
Number Blatt?
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Hope they have a great time. And the next item on the agenda, also under new business, is the approval of an overnight field trip, Bartlett Student Council to the annual conference in Hyannis.
And this is Melinda, and an annual trip.
Good evening, Mrs. Darty.
... to Massachusetts Association's student council. Actually, two nights, Wednesday, come back Friday.
You want me to do that? Come back Friday in time for the students to get on the bus and go home.
Great. This is something you guys do annually, typically, right?
Yep.
Yep.
And they have not been able to do it since 2020. They got back to school and, what, it was a couple of days later, the school shut down, and they have not held it since then. And this is the first year back, so it's going to be exciting. Our president is the only one who has gone, and she went as a freshman.
Wow.
So trying to build those numbers right back up.
Great. Well, it sounds like a great opportunity.
It is. It's, and we're hoping to bring back some exciting ideas to do at Bartlett.
Yep. Good. Any questions or comments from the committee? Thanks for taking our kids on this trip. Really appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the trip as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Number Navarada?
Yes.
Number Blight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. Thanks again, Mrs. Darty.
Have fun.
Thanks. Have a great night.
You, too. All right. So, in the interest of getting back on track here, we're going to move on back up to the agenda and have our superintendent's report. Good evening.
Chair Siddiqui, could we please do the iReady presentation?
Yep.
So that our coaches, who are dedicating some of their time, can go home a little early.
Thank you. Yes.
It's my pleasure to introduce Tara Jalina, Jess Barokas, and Sarah Argentieri. They are academic instructional coaches in the building, and they are going to present the iReady data from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year.
Hi, so thank you for having us tonight. I'm Jess Barokas. I am the coach at Bartlett. So this is our presentation. As you are probably aware, iReady is our benchmark testing that we use from K to 12 in our district. So far, we have done our fall benchmark and our winter benchmark, which just passed in January. So we're going to get into a couple of slides, and Tara is going to tell you which domains are tested.
Hi, yep, so I'm Tara Jalina. I'm the coach at Park Ave Elementary School. So iReady actually consists of two different tests, an ELA test and a math test, and we take them in two sessions because they're pretty long, and you don't want test fatigue to set in. The ELA has five components, phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocab, and then comprehension. They break up the comprehension into literature and informational text. And when we get the results, you get an overall score, but it also breaks down in each of those domains. So if you needed to do any kind of intervention, you could actually go to that particular domain to see where the kid falls. The nonfiction piece is actually something that we are looking at in the fourth grade right now, based on how they did on their winter benchmarks. The math domain is numbers and operations, algebra, thinking, measurement and data, and geometry, and it works the same exact way. So you get an overall score, say that you come out grade two, but you might come out, like, lower or higher in one of the domains, and then iReady gives you some advice and some lessons to redirect.
And just to give, oh, and I'm sorry, I'm Sarah Argentieri. I'm the coach at the middle school. Just to give you a legend or a key of what we're looking at, because we put together some pie charts with the data, it breaks it down. So if you see the green, that means that the students are on or above grade level. The yellow means that they're one grade level below, and the red means that they're two or more grade levels below. So when you're just looking at things, that kind of breaks it down for you.
So we're going to start off with Park Ave, and we broke up the slides into reading and math, and we showed the overall for the school, and then we broke it into the grade levels. So for reading, this was the fall. The green, like she said, was on grade level for overall, yellow, one grade below, and red, two grades below. We went from 23% to 44% in the green, so that was a really nice bump. And what's, I find even more impressive is the yellow also got bigger. Well, actually, it didn't get bigger, it just moved. But it ended up, the red is down to 14%. And that's overall. This is kindergarten. Obviously, there's no red because you can't be two grade levels below in kindergarten. However, they came in at least one grade level below, and now we're at 4753. This is grade one. Again, it was a really small, I, this one, there's only 3% that are two grade levels below, so that was a nice jump. And, again, 42% was the green. By, I'm sorry, grade two. For this one, is that, is this the one that, just wanted to make sure. Yes, actually, I think I made a mistake on this one. Oh, did you, you changed it already?
Oh, you updated one that was...
You updated it? Oh, good. This one, I had made a mistake initially, but that is the right pie chart. So they went to 38% in the green, and again, the, the red is down to 15%. So we're really shrinking the red. This is grade three. Again, this, as you can see now, the red is actually growing a little bit more. It seems like once we get into, like, third and fourth grade, that's when it really starts getting more and more difficult to, to maintain the growth. And there's a grade four. Grade four actually is much better than grade three. And then in math, we started off significantly low, and 29% isn't very high, but we cut the red in half, so again, it's moving. And kindergarten, in, in, right now, in math, we're doing ST math across the school. The kids are very, very involved in it, and they are very invested in it. So, especially kindergarten. So it's clearly working for them. That's grade one. Again, we have a lot more in yellow, which is great, but we really need to get that green a lot higher. So we're still struggling with this piece. We're talking a lot at our, our most recent PDs, we've been looking a lot at the frameworks of math, and we're looking at what we can do to improve our math. Grade two had a nicer bump, but still not anywhere near what we want it to be. Grade was pretty much the same as grade two. And then grade four did, again, and grade four is another grade that is very invested in ST math, so I was looking at today how the students that have, like, there's some, there's, like, a large populations of students that have already hit 100% in ST math, and I was looking to see how they did versus on iReady. And a lot of the students that had hit that 100% on ST math moved up at least one grade level on iReady, especially if they were on the green or yellow, the yellow and green.
Okay, so I'm going to present the data from the middle school. It's set up very similar to how Tara did, so we'll start with the reading. So as you can see, overall, we did have progress. It wasn't as huge of jumps as there were at Park Ave, but I mean, overall, we are making progress. We are shrinking the red and the yellow and growing. We did have just a 6% increase on grade level in reading overall, but it is an increase. And you know, it is, as the kids get older, it becomes more difficult to start moving their reading levels. So it's, you know, we are making progress, and there is growth happening. So grade five, again, as you can see, there is a move. We went from 26 to 34. You're going to see that trend, I think, as we go through most of the grades. There was a lot of movement. Grade six had an increase as well, 30% to 42 on grade level. We're still shrinking the yellow, we're shrinking the red, so it's all, you know, good forward progress that's happening. Grade seven had a little bit of a dip, you know, and there's different things you can attribute that to, whether it's, you know, they were on grade level because really, when they take it in the fall, they're taking the end of sixth grade, they're not seeing new standards, and this is when the content becomes more rigorous for them, and the standards become more difficult to deal with. And then by, when they take it mid-year, that's when they've been, you know, given more rigor and more standard-based in seventh grade, so that's why you might see a little bit of a dip there. And then, you know, that should increase again in the end of the year. And I know there's been lots of conversations with teachers about, like, what are we doing in our tier-one instruction, as well as in our enrichment, to try to make sure that we're getting these kids, you know, back on grade level. And then eighth grade, there was an increase again from 23 to 30. So really, it's, you know, looking at, you know, what are we doing and what's working well? So we're having growth, just slow growth. And then, as far as math goes, very similar. So we had, again, there was about a 7% change from the fall to the mid-year data on grade level, but as you can see, yellow's shrinking, red's shrinking. And then, as we go through, fifth grade math looked really good. They had a huge jump from 22 to 39%. And same thing, they're using the ST math and the Ready Math, you know, we're constantly using data to form their small groups and inform their tier-one instruction, as well as RTI. Sixth grade, same thing. You had a jump from 20 to 27. You know, the yellow did get a little bit bigger, but if you look at it, the red got smaller, so we're probably pulling kids that were two grade levels behind into one grade level, so that movement is happening in a positive direction. Grade seven, you still had growth, which is great, especially because we had a lot of change. The red did get a little bigger. We did have three different math teachers in grade seven throughout the beginning of the year, so having that consistency piece there now, I think that you're going to see a change again, you know, in the end-of-the-year data, now that the kids are getting this consistent instruction, and they're also getting used to the new standards, and the rigor has gotten more difficult. And then grade eight had an increase as well. We went from 8% to 14, so, you know, same thing. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the middle school data.
Who's the chair?
I just have a comment. I just, another question about what's going to be done. And it's nice to see that there are some students are on grade level, but these graphs are showing that 50 to 60% of our students are one or more grade levels behind. I, myself, can't say, "Hooray, 20% are on grade level." That's not good. What are we doing about it?
Right, and... So, so, yeah, I mean, we can, we can talk about some of the changes that we've been taking place. So, in fact, I was going to kind of mention those things as we showed you Bartlett, because to be quite frank, these numbers aren't going to look much better to you if I'm just putting it out there.
Oh, I know. We have to.
Yeah. And so, so if, let's just talk about what we are doing, which is, you know, they're incremental changes, but really significant change does take a lot of time, and it does take a lot of stakeholders to make movements and to make progress in the right direction. So I want to, I want to just talk about one thing that we did in the middle school last year and in the, in the high school, and now we've continued it here, too, is that we started implementing administration procedures of the iReady test in an MCAS setting format, which means before iReady in previous years was just given in any kind of random class at any period during the day. I don't think there was really much structure around how it was administered to students. And there was a lot of mindset, I think, in the building that this test doesn't carry a lot of significance or a lot of weight or importance. And so, right now, we are in the process of changing mindsets in our buildings, in all the buildings, but especially at the middle school and high school level, I think we've done the most change in that, in that manner. And so now, we've rolled out administration procedures. We set it up in an MCAS format where the students are taking it first thing in the morning for the first, you know, two periods of the day. They're all locked in their classrooms, you know, like, settled, not moving, not making a lot of transitions or changes. And they know that, at this point, they're being placed in enrichment groups in the middle school, where they're getting instruction based off of their iReady score. They know that as a result of what their score is, they'll be placed in a group accordingly. Same at the high school. They know that they'll be placed in a numeracy skills course, which would, it would replace one of the courses that maybe they wanted to take, but they have to take the numeracy skills course to get that remedial work. They're also being placed in a literacy skills course if their scores in iReady aren't up to par or if they're significantly below grade level. So those are the, those are the things in place in our buildings, where students know, hey, let's take this test seriously, because it does have some repercussions based off of what your scores are, because we want to have you make those gains. So just one thing in particular, we had a really poor completion rate of this test overall last year. We went from an 86% completion rate, which was about, I want to say, on average, about 25 students per grade level in the high school, didn't even complete it. So we didn't even have a data point on them at all, at any point during the school year, which is a challenge. And it might be because of attendance and things like that, but we've increased that to 92%. So, and I think the few students that don't complete it might be in our life skills courses or students that would be exempt from taking the iReady test anyway. So we've made significant improvements on making sure that we have data across the board for these students, which I think is a really big success. And I think it's only going to go up from there. And as we look at the scores, there's some incremental changes. On the coach level, we have a lot of work to do with working with our consultants and working with our teachers, who are those MCAS-tested area teachers, those core content teachers. I know that we're meeting with different, you know, different groups of leaders in our building and different teachers. Me, myself, I'm meeting with the English 1 and 2 department, I'm meeting with the biology department, and I'm meeting with Algebra 1 and Algebra 2 and Geometry. And the reason why those meetings are so important is that we're common planning every week, multiple times per week. So for math scores, we see how the data looks for math. Our math department is working really hard each time that we meet to plan their tests very carefully, bring back the data to the table the next time their students take a test. They look at the data and how they align with the standards, and they're reteaching and retesting their students. And they're, and they're making sure that they're calibrating their scoring and making sure that there's consistency across the board, so that no student is, is falling through the cracks in their classrooms. So those are significant strides, but again, that takes a lot of time. And then, in the English department, we're doing very careful and thoughtful planning with our studies and curriculum, and I think a real big win is that with our consultants and working with the New Teacher Project, which is, they're from Desi, and they work with Desi very closely, is that they're seeing that we're all using high-quality texts in our classroom. And that means that with more high-quality texts, our students will be doing more rigorous tasks. And if they're doing more rigorous tasks, then those gaps will close over time, but it does take a while for that kind of change to happen. But I, I want to just compliment all of the people here who've been working really hard, and I know that those scores probably don't look that great, but we are making really significant strides in the right direction. I think that's something to really be proud of.
I'd also like to add that, like at Park Ave, we have been working with the Hill, and we have really streamlined the small group instruction. They have very specific lessons that pinpoint all the levels of the phonics and the phonological awareness and encoding. The teachers have really latched onto that. They're doing well with that. I think that you'll see in, in our data, especially when it comes to DIBELS and, and more performance-based tasks, you will see an improvement in that as well. I mean, not that iReady is not a performance-based task, but it is a multiple choice. So when you have a performance-based task, you can see a little bit more of what the student is capable of, whereas with the multiple choice, you wonder, was there errors? Was there guessing? Was there other things that come into play? And as far as the math goes, we, we know that there is not any interventions right now in math. It's just right on the classroom teacher, so we're really looking into how to use iReady and that data to break it into the domains and to create intervention groups moving forward.
Just a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, thank you both, thank you all for what you've already said so far. And I know we have another school to unpack before we get too far into the good work that's being done in the buildings. And I, I just want to put it out there that the three of you are here to present this data. You don't own this data. You've compiled this data, so this is not a reflection on the good work that you or anyone else is doing in the building. And I just want to preface things by saying that, and then, maybe we should open it up for you to present Bartlett, and then we can go back into some of our Q and A, unless, Ms. Millet, you have questions, or, or anyone else about, about the two so far, but maybe we can take it as a package?
Yeah.
That work? Okay. All right, great.
All right, so here's our reading scores. The first slide is showing the overall data. Again, incremental changes and increases. We've moved 3% out of two grade levels or more below, and we've, we've widened the gap for only one grade level below, and a little, yeah, there's a little dip there. Yeah, we can just move on. No, that's okay. This is grade nine. As you can see, there were, there was growth. And I'll be honest, if I'm looking at the grade nine data, to be quite frank, those ninth graders, they just left eighth grade, and they know that their iReady score carries weight, because they were just using them for enrichment groups. They were in enrichment groups all year long. So I think they, out of all the grade levels, probably take it the most seriously, because they know, coming from the middle school, that they had a lot of changes because of that test data. Yep. Here's grade 10, so we're making gains. You can see in the green and the yellow. Grade 11, here's the data for grade 11 and grade 12. You can kind of put them together as a package deal if you kind of want. I have to say that January was our winter benchmark month, and when we were looking at the district testing calendar, we had to make some rearrangements in that calendar because the dates actually conflicted with their Semester 1 finals. And if you're asking a student, what carries more weight to them, their iReady test or their Semester 1 finals, they're probably going to say Semester 1 finals. So it was just three solid weeks of testing for these students, and that's not including later on at the beginning of February when they were doing their mock exams. So it was a really heavily tested month. I think these two grade levels, 11th and 12th in particular, are probably the two that would be a little less than willing to, to take it as seriously as possible, because they have a lot of other tests that are on their minds, to be frank. Here's the math data, the whole school data. Here is the scores for you to take a look at. We can move on to grade nine. There has been significant growth in grade nine. I know that those Algebra 1 teachers are working really hard with those students. Can move on to 10. There's been more significant improvements there. I'm very pleased with those results, and I'm, I think it has a lot to do with our curriculum that we use, which is CPM. That's, it's a great curriculum. It's one that teachers use with fidelity, and that's the one, or the particular group of teachers who are working really hard to adjust their score, like, their tests and their scores and reteaching and retesting their students. And here's the grade 11 iReady math data. There's not much change. And here's the grade 12. I don't really have much to say about it, other than, take a look. Does anybody have any questions?
Maybe just to start things off, and you've already put things very nicely about some of the interventions that are in place, but what are the learnings? And this isn't just directed at the coaches, this is directed at all the stakeholders. What are the, what are we learning from this data?
So, you know, I think just something that I think we need to take into consideration, too, with this data, is we do have, you know, being that we are a low socioeconomic school district, we kind of face some struggles with that. We had a lot of big hits with COVID, which our kids have gaps. They have gaps that teachers are working really hard, day in and day out, both in their tier-one instruction, you know, the way we do it in enrichment at the middle school. And those gaps are going to take time, and so that's part of it. You know, we have these programs now in place, we have these high-quality curriculums that everyone is trying to implement and using to get these kids up to speed, and it's, you know, it's kind of one of those, it's frustrating, because we live in this, we want the instant, we want to see this progress very quickly, and it doesn't happen as quickly as we'd like to see it. And so that's why, you know, when you look at it and you see that over 50% are below grade level, that can be frustrating, but you can also look at it as, but there was movement. We are moving kids, and so we are taking steps forward. And if we're moving kids, then what else can we continue to do to keep moving kids forward? And so that's, I think, kind of how we look at it as coaches, as we're in there day-to-day, we're seeing what the teachers are doing, we're helping, you know, in the work. And I know the, I know at the middle school, the teachers are looking at this iReady data constantly to inform their instruction, not just their enrichment. And so, you know, it, it takes time to make these big changes.
One of the things that we noticed when we were making the graphs, and it's more of a question than a, like, haven't really thought about how we're going to fix it, but it's very interesting, if you look at the grade levels in the beginning of the year for all the grade levels, they start off significantly lower than where that previous grade level was mid-year. So I don't know, obviously, I don't have the spring here to look at yet, but if we, say, we take kindergarten and we move them to, like, 70%, because right now, they're at 43, but then, and when first grade, we start off, they start off at, like, 30%. So I don't, I'm not sure what's going on there, but it happened, if you look at all of the grades, it happens every single year.
So, Ms. Jalina, what you're talking about is following a cohort.
Yeah.
Is that being done at the district level?
Yeah. So can I just interject for a second? The iReady assessment data assesses a student at the beginning of the year on all of the The iReady assessment data assesses a student at the beginning of the year on all of the standards for that particular grade level, so it is expected that the students don't know all of those standards. And so, the, as you progress, we certainly want to see kids on grade level, it's a measurement. The beauty about the iReady assessment is that you can really diagnose what students don't know, and the teachers then can use those predictors, um, those standards, and work on small groups with students. So, I think a lot of structures are in place. This data, unfortunately, isn't new data or the result of COVID in terms of our district data. And in terms of looking at MCAS data, we showed, we have showed cohort data before, and we see that, um, students are losing ground going from grade to grade. One of the things that we've done, and we've worked really hard here to do, is put in the hands of teachers research-based curriculum. We've also put you wonderful coaches in place, and we've also put consultants in place to work with the coaches and the principals and the ILT teams to look at tier-one instructional practices. There's a lot of research out there. If you continue to teach at the grade level that the student is at, the gap grows. There's a lot of research to show that you have to teach at grade level, and that's a stretch for some grades, and because it's difficult, our teachers are working hard, everyone in the district is working hard to change this trajectory. I think the structures are in place with the research-based curriculum, with the coaches helping teachers with pacing, analyzing data, and getting to that data piece so that they can have prescribed lessons for individual students to close the gaps. Certainly, I think we've done a lot of work around literacy in this district to ensure early intervention is the key. And to one of your points before, it is much harder to close the gap once the kids get to the middle school, but it's not impossible. And so, I think that that is where we're at with the district. Um, this, I want to thank you guys, because it is hard to present data that's not pretty. Um, this is where we're at. I think you're going to progressively see changes in the data with the structures that are in place, if they stay in place. Tier-one instructional practices is the focus for the district. What is happening in the classroom? Is it on grade level? Are the students engaged, which ties directly to the district strategic plan, bucket number two? Are the students doing the majority of the thinking on grade level? What is the evidence of that? And as we progress, we, we actually had a meeting today about this. We really need to roll up our sleeves and start really looking at that student work. What are they producing? What is it? Is it on grade level? Is it high-level tasks? Because we can see that, we have been doing observations, we can see that teachers are teaching on grade level, but sometimes the task that the student is asked to do isn't on grade level, it's below. So, we have to sort of change that trajectory. And talking about it, having conversations about it, and supporting people with it without the blame game, we're in this together to help kids is the way out of this. But I will be clear, this is turnaround work. This is the turnaround work, and this is not a direct result of COVID. Was it impacted by COVID? Maybe some, but we had this issue, and we've had this issue, and there's lots of variables, but the structures that we've put in place, I think, are going to help us. And principals know this, the schedule in the building is key. Is there time for math? Is there time for science? Is there time for ELA? Is there time for enrichment? And those things have to play into the day-to-day, because you can't make progress if there's not consistent strategies and practices. So, again, thank you ladies for your work with our teachers around this. Um, and in each school, we're developing different understandings, because each school's in a different space with using data and, and understanding iReady. So, um, your teamwork together is very much appreciated. Thank you.
So, I have a question and a comment. The first question might be more of a comment, but, um, so we can see that there's growth during the course of the school year, but as the years progress, we have an increasing number of students that are two or more grade levels below grade level. How is it that these students can be actively engaged in grade-level work when they're at least two or more years behind the instruction that's happening, and they're all in the same classroom?
Can I answer part of that?
It sounds impossible, which is why I'm asking.
So, so when I mentioned earlier that we're trying to change, change mindsets in the building, I think there, that students, and especially grade 11 and grade 12, if I'm being quite honest, they don't care about this test right now, and we're trying to get them to care about it. And so, oftentimes, they're clicking through the buttons, they, they have a red rushed flag that we'll have to reset and give them, you know, another, you know, another chance to take the test again, because it does alert you if they've rushed through. Um, but there are, there are certain students who just don't want to take this test seriously, and for, I don't know, I don't know why, you know, because they're in 11th and 12th grade, I'm not quite sure. But, um, it's really hard to change mindsets. We're changing mindsets in the building about the usefulness of data and the importance of it, but how do you relate that to, how do you relay that same message to kids? That's, it's hard, it, it, that's a hard task to do. They have a million other things, I think, on their mind, and iReady is definitely probably bottom priority for them. Many of them, they feel like, why am I taking this test again? Why do I take this every year? We hear that from those older students, so I don't know if you want to weigh in at all on that.
Well, just what I'll say is while that may be true, we have to assume that this data is valid. And if we assume that this data is valid, the question remains, how do we expect students, and this isn't directed at you, Ms. Brokaw.
Yes.
How do we expect students to be engaged in what's happening in the classroom when they're two or more full years behind the material that's being presented to them?
So, I think that one of the, one of the things that Dr. Gogan alluded to is that a big part of the work that we've been doing last year and this year with, you know, in conjunction with the, the grants and the consultants that we have, is really helping the teachers identify, like, am I teaching at grade level? Because if I'm not teaching at grade level consistently throughout the year, and I'm assessing my assessments and they're not at grade level, then there's like a false sense of on-grade level. And then these assessments happen, MCAS, iReady, and they're testing students at grade level, and there could be, uh, there could be a, a schism between these two data sets, right? So, part of the work that we're doing is really helping teachers internalize, what is this curriculum? We have, we have a lot, we have an abundance of high-quality curriculum materials. Our next phase is, are we asking students to interface with this text at grade level as well? And if we're not, when they're tested at grade-level interface, where are we falling apart? So, we have to analyze the questions from these state tests, we have to analyze, uh, like, where are students falling apart on MCAS, for instance, or on iReady? Which of these questions are, are stumbling kids? Is it higher-order thinking questions? Is it figurative language? What is it? So, we're, we're working with the teams to try at a deeper level, drill down and figure out at that, at the core, are students doing the majority of the thinking, or I, am I, as the teacher, doing more of the lift for them? Am I speaking more than they are? In, in planning, the consultants are helping and the teams are working, the ILT teams, the CPT teams are working at planning. And in my purposeful planning, am I creating opportunities for students to engage with the text? Because if I don't think about that ahead of time, then I might follow a lesson plan and I might just go from start to finish without engaging the students. So, that's a huge piece to, to think about. Why is there such a big difference between how students fare on benchmark testing and high, high-stakes testing versus what we typically ask them to do in the classroom? Right? So, that this is, this is, these are the, the questions that are popping up for our analysis. And, and I also want to, I also want to say, you know, to the point of scheduling, that this is the second year that Park Avenue and the middle school have purposely scheduled intervention blocks. They call it different things at the different schools, it's enrichment at middle school, and it's embedded into, um, some of the ELA time at the elementary school or walk to read. But this is only our second year of implementation, and so, and, and we have pros and cons. We have things that we have to continuously assess what's working well and what's not working well, where can we improve? But if we don't address tier one, then, like, focusing the energy on interventions and catching kids up is in and of itself fruitless, because we're only, we're only going to be able to do so much, and we're, if we're not continuing on acceleration, if we're not continuing to focus on high-quality materials on or above grade-level standards with just-in-time scaffolds, then we are contributing to the divide that's happening for students. So, so that's, I just want to be very clear about that, that that's a huge, huge focus for us. The schools have worked really hard at creating and sustaining and improving a sense of belonging, and, and that's wonderful. If you go into classrooms, the classrooms are like, you walk through the high school, it's a quiet place. You walk through the middle school, it's a quiet place. Are the, are, so it's, it's orderly, and what's happening in the classrooms is, it, is it telling the same picture? So, students feel safe, they're, they have this, you know, we're paying a lot of attention to, to sense of belonging, but if that sense of belonging isn't contributing to, in service of having high, you know, students doing the majority of the thinking and taking ownership for their learning, then is it enough? So, these are some of the questions that we're grappling with to, to make some of those improvements.
Totally agree. I still remain unclear on how we're keeping kids engaged when they're two full years behind the material that's being presented.
I, I think I can address that a little bit. One of the things that we've just done with Hill is we've been looking at differentiating the whole group instruction time, um, and we talked about productive struggle and differentiation. So, we've taken the kids by their instructional focus. So, basically, based on their data, they fall into four different categories, whether it's decoding, fluency, or vocab comp, or, um, advanced comp. And based on that, we made flow charts with the teachers, we brainstormed how we could differentiate each parts of, of a lesson for those type of students. So, we're trying to get the teachers to look at their whole group time a completely different way. So, just because it's whole group time does not mean you need to have all 25 kids sitting in front of you, reading the book to them. If those five kids can read the book by themselves, those five kids need to go read the book by themselves. These four kids will come over with me, I will break down the vocabulary with them, I will work on the, the phonics words with them that they're stuck on, and then we will read the book together. Those kids right there need to work with a partner and, and read, read fluently. And, and they're all working on the same grade-level text, they're all doing the same work, but we're giving them what they need in order to access it. So, right now, we created a flow chart for all the different components of the literacy block, and this, okay, so if you're doing the Reader's Writer's Companion, and you have your vocab comp kids, here's some things that you could do to push them. They can go off and do it on their own, they can answer an open response question, you know, and then you check in with them after. In the meantime, you have the other students that need that extra piece. I think that's where you were going with that.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That's exactly what we work on, is, is taking that whole group, that tier-one instruction, the middle school's doing the same thing with their small group during that time with, just, it's taking the curriculum and making it, still keeping it on grade level, but making it accessible to the kids based on their needs of what they need, so the kids are still getting that high-level, on-grade-level instruction, just with whatever scaffolding or differentiation or support that they may need to keep them on that grade level. So, those things are happening.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, I mean, I've been, many of us on the committee have been asking whether or not there are enough adults in the classroom at a given time in order to accomplish this type of thing. And, you know, it just sounds like their, teachers are doing the best they can, you all are doing the best you can with what you have, um, but it, it begs the question of whether or not having another person to run some smaller groups or something like that would be beneficial to close some of these gaps.
So, may I speak from a high school standpoint? Good evening, ladies. I, I want to say, and Jessica could answer this as well, our work has really informed a lot of decision-making moving forward, and you've heard me share out several different programs throughout the year on, um, the Bartlett share-out weeks here at the school committee. But most importantly is we move forward and addressing that tier-one level instruction, we have to look at fidelity of what those core instructional programs look like that they're talking about. Jessica mentioned a little bit at Bartlett about the math, the Algebra 1 team, in terms of what their work looks like with CPM. There is a high level of fidelity in work within that team right now that is turning the dial when it comes to what you see in the math data. As we look at those core instructional programs through Studies and with our English department, we are trying to make the same strides, as well as with our Science Department in bringing in outside resources and coming up with what good quality curriculum looks like and what we should be targeting in terms of those needs. In addition to that, and I've taken a lot of notes as people were talking to kind of come back to your question, time on learning is a huge thing at the high school, and I will be sitting here again in the weeks to come as we discuss what that looks like, but there is, um, a, a strong need for time on learning and what that looks like for periods and blocks for students and what, how much time they're getting on instruction, but how much time teachers have to plan. Because to answer your question, um, Chair Siddiqui, back to what you stated, they are two years behind, and I am making that up plus what's in front of me.
Right.
As I head to an end of a course and I'm going to take a state exam, and that is huge, and that is hard to do without time. That is hard to do without a remedial course that leads into, let's take biology as an example. If I'm a ninth grader entering Bartlett High School, I know in May I'm going to take an exam, a state of Massachusetts exam in biology, but I'm already two grade, grade levels below in literacy, and the biology exam is technically a reading test, right? Um, and we know without a remedial course, something in the fall, maybe before they take a spring exam, we're not going to make up those gaps.
Right.
And it is difficult. So, it is right here for me, it is right here for Jessica, and I think it's right here as well for our teachers and definitely for, um, the rest of the admin team, because lastly, we, I think the, the third note I made in terms of addressing this is a culture of learning. And that addresses what Jessica said to you about our students don't take the test seriously. That is an overall culture of learning that starts with, um, with our staff and pushing that out, that this is important, this is an extra measure, and yes, it is difficult, and you all know this, with high school students, they're faced with a lot of testing. Our own student tonight reported to you how much testing was taking place in a matter of two weeks' time. So, it is, and we can sit, and some of those things, and I think we all know, they, when you add them up, it's like, okay, are they making excuses? Are those really things?
Mm-hmm.
And it does, it can, it can look like that, but all I can say is, as the future comes, we are looking at what that, what that needs, what those needs are, and looking to address those. And the biggest things are fidelity within those core instructional programs, a culture of learning, and time on learning. We've got to look at how do we get the teachers in front of the kids for longer blocks of time, but the teachers to have longer blocks of planning. We are, we are really banging our head against the wall with how do we get more structured time for our teachers to sit and go over those strategies that we have been led through with our ILT teams this year. So, know that that's coming, and that request is, is right there. And this data, if anything, informs my decision-making wholeheartedly as we move forward and how we do that, because I know that we have to make up those gaps because it's, it's there, it's two years plus. It's like, okay, when are we going to do it? And we have to do it, we need time. So, to do that, we're working on that with our schedule. Myself and Ms. Neves are working with outside stakeholders now, both with our SaaS team and with our Power School team to help us inform those decisions as, in the next few weeks. Right now, happening every day around us, so, just so that you know, we are looking at that data every day, it drives what we do and what our decisions will look like moving forward.
Thanks, Mr. Collins, and all of you. Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Ms. Navarada.
So, thank you for the presentation, again, acknowledging it's not easy, but it was clear. Um, so, and I also want to thank you, Dr. Mackay, for your explanation on, um, teaching to the grade-level standards, because that is so very important, and you explained it very well in terms of why that gap exists when we don't do that. Um, so, I, I had a question in regards to barriers. I know, you know, you talked about COVID, which Dr. Gogan acknowledged, you know, these, this data existed before COVID, that would, could, would be the same for our high-need students, they were here as well, um, and the data is the same. What are some other barriers? Ms. Jalino, you talked about no math intervention right now going on at Park Ave. I believe through the budget, we've eliminated the math interventionists at the high school? Um, is that true? No? Okay.
Adding a math coach at the high school in the budget.
Oh, but replacing a math interventionist and maybe?
It's, it's a literacy interventionist now, and we're adding a math, um, coach.
Okay.
At the high school.
So, in general, and I know Chair Siddiqui talked about staffing, so can you share with us what you see as barriers to, you know, moving the needle even a little bit further for when we come back around in the spring to review that data?
I think scheduling is a huge barrier. Scheduling is, it's always a problem. Um, there doesn't seem to be enough time for writing, or, um, or it's definitely sign. There doesn't seem to be enough time for writing or, or definitely science. Like, we have a really hard time getting science in in K to four. So the schedule's a problem. I would say that.
For us at the high school, I know that scheduling, yes, I concur, scheduling is an issue as well as staffing. Sometimes it's just, we just don't have enough people to fill the bodies. You know, if people call out, it's hard to find replacements. And then one of the first things that the fat gets trimmed on is that planning time with those teachers. And that's why Mr. Collins is speaking so much about having sacred time and having, making sure that that's untouchable time. And right now, when I'm meeting with those teachers for planning, if we've got, you know, a large number of staff who are out that day, we have to, you know, beg, borrow and steal from what we have within the building to make those, you know, coverage needs happen. And then one of the things that gets cut unfortunately, and it just happened the last couple of days, is our common planning time where the coach is working with our MCAS-tested areas. So that's a huge challenge, is staffing and scheduling.
Time, time, common practice. Task, you know, look at data, figure out how you're going to change your instruction, plan to change your instruction, work with your other teachers that are teaching, you know, the same subject areas to make sure that you all are teaching the same common standard assessment. It takes time to do that and it is. That is probably a challenge that most schools are facing when they're trying to figure this out is definitely time, you know, on planning with each other. Cause, you know, you need that as well to be able to implement some of these things.
I think another barrier that we, we talk about a lot, but we don't, there's really no way to fix it, is we have a very transient population. I mean, we did, we did our iReady data. We had 15 students start like literally the day we opened up the window. So, you know, here's 15 brand new students that had no instruction with us whatsoever. We lose kids every grade level and we get new kids in, but we don't get them at the beginning of the year. We get them way late into the year and sometimes we lose them as quick as we get them. So, and, you know, that, that really changes the dynamic of the classroom. It changes the dynamic of everything, you know? Because now you have this, these new students in your room that don't have all the, the strategies and skills in place that all the other students have.
I mean, another barrier possibly, I'm, just in general, is that we're losing a lot of our really higher level students in eighth grade, moving into ninth grade. They're leaving the district. So that's why our data looks so shifted as well. You know, you, you lose all those students who would score very highly on iReady and now it's going to be swallowed up by the rest of the population who's not on grade level, unfortunately, and.
That's a good point. Dr. Mackay.
I would like to say too that iReady is the, like, we've, we've developed an assessment protocol. Like, last year we, we worked really hard through the Glean team to identify what are our assessments and what decisions get made based on those assessments. And those are, iReady was one of them that is consistent from K to 12. So we decided to use that as like a starting gate and then to drill down and get more diagnostic with like certain percentiles. So if a student score is below a certain percentile, then there might be another assessment that's done more individually to see like how is this, where is, where are they breaking down? And that informs the intervention. So we've done a lot of work with trying to identify those assessments. There is a lot of work to be done still on the development of common assessments that are like more frequent sort of dipsticks to where the students are at so that we can, in the moment, take care of some things instead of waiting, you know, a month and a half or three months from now until the next iReady, the next iReady test comes along. We also have been, you know, we've talked about the, the richness of our resources currently, especially with the ESAR funds. And we have tried to implement supports for students after school and, and during extended time. That it is, that when the commissioner spoke many, many times during and after COVID, that we were tasked with finding out-of-school time opportunities or building out-of-school time opportunities for students to help catch up some of the students. But that is not mandatory. You can't make anybody come before or after school. And there is a relatively low attendance. So it's, it's, that's problematic in the sense that we have a high need and not a lot of participation in those after-school programs. Today I was speaking to one of the teachers at the high school to try to get students ready for MCAS. And, you know, I think that we need to come up with a list, look at how severe is this need? Is it their third time taking MCAS? Like, how, how many more chances do they have to take MCAS? And I think an action, an immediate action on our part is a, a higher level of engagement with the families and with the students themselves on like, this is, this is where you're at and let's come up with a plan for completion for you. And I think a lot of the efforts in the past have been, we have these programs available to you. They're on such and such a date from this time to this time. And then it's kind of like come or not come. But we, I think, need to increase the effort to invest the students and invest the families to take advantage of those opportunities. We have people willing to work. We have money to pay teachers. We have resources. We need the students to come.
Yeah, well put, Dr. Mackay. Can you, anybody describe some more about the after-school programming that's offered? I wasn't familiar with that.
We've focused on, Park Avenue is a different story because we have the 21st Century Grant. So we have before-school opportunities for, for STEM, for math and STEM. And we have the 21st Century program at Park Ave. It's very well-attended. It's a grant that we've had for a long time. At the middle school, we just started a couple of weeks ago and the primary focus, the students that were targeted were the students that had received failure notices. And so we're trying to work with increasing like a response, yes, my child will come, no, my child won't come. So that there's a little bit more involvement with that. And it's, I've asked the teachers to come up with a plan. Actually gave a template and it, you know, to have a conversation with the student, to identify with the student why it is that you have this notice that you're failing. And for some students, it is, I didn't come. It's attendance. Or I didn't hand in classwork, or I didn't do assignments, or I didn't pass my tests. And that will, that conversation can lead to a conversation about how do we get you there? So that I've asked for an individual plan on every student that is going to be participating. A little bit more work, but I think it's, the hope is that it will yield a better understanding of what's expected of me as a student and a clearer picture of I need to do A, B, or C. It also helps the adults understand what they need to do. Is it reteaching or is it like, let's find out and organize your assignments? Where are they? Let's get you to that passing place. And at the same time, they're infusing some MCAS support because that's coming up for, for middle school. At the high school, we've had two opportunities so far. We had, in response to our MCAS scores, especially in biology, we had a bio MCAS boot camp. And then we had a support for ELA in math in the fall where they came after school. It was not very well-attended. So this is why today I was meeting with this teacher to talk about how can we make it better? Like, how can we increase the investment of, of that? So those are the, those are the student support after-school activities. We have been funding, every once in a while, something comes to the table and there's like, somebody wants to do something cool for the kids. Like the group that we've been, I can't, I can't think of the name. Is it? But they're like fun act, like Dungeons and Dragons, like, like just fun activities for students after school. Somebody comes up with, with an idea, like Girls on the Run. Somebody comes up with an idea. We can fund it through ESAR if it's related to student engagement. And, and it needs to run that way for a couple of years before they can, you know, make it a permanent club or something like that. So, so always looking for ideas for people to step up and, and create, and create that. Pretty soon we'll start planning our summer programming, but need to get through our MCAS right now because there's a lot of it. I, having come from the elementary school, there, there are like five administrations of MCAS at the high school level and there's like one at the elementary. So it's a big, big difference. It's a lot of, a lot of managing of those systems for five administrations at the high school. So.
We're fortunate to be in a district that has, you know, free busing and also the late bus also available to students. I wonder if I, I hadn't heard of some of the remedial type groups just because I don't have a student that's in need of them, you know? But sometimes I, I agree with you that sometimes maybe parents are the way to, you know, having that reality check. When kids are bringing home As and Bs or Bs and Cs, it seems okay until you realize that they're, they're so far behind. And that's that schism that you were referencing, I think, earlier, Dr. Mackay, of, you know, having decent grades, but clearly not being where they need to be and not having any awareness of that.
So I think that that, the parents are definitely a big piece, but I think that one-on-one conversation with the students to help the students understand where they're, where they stand and not only that, but to, to say like, there's a path. There's a path for you as opposed to, we all know what feeling overwhelmed is like and we freeze and students freeze. And so if they feel like they can't get themselves out of a particular hole, they freeze. And so we have a responsibility to engage with that problem, with that issue and help our students unfreeze, help our students out and find a path to finishing or to completion.
Through the chair, I just have one follow-up question. Everybody else asked all of my questions. When is the spring iReady testing? Do we have that date yet or that timeframe? Okay.
It's in May.
Okay.
But they will be coming off of MCAS, so.
Right, right.
See some of the same, it's not such a big, well, obviously Park Ave doesn't, but it's not bad at Park Ave, the test fatigue as it would be for you guys.
I was just wondering if there was time, there may not be, since it's in May, to get that data back to kind of, you know, look at that and, and make sure that we are on the right path, right? The right trajectory for the guardrails that you all have in place. So I was just, I'm not sure that there is time, but I just wanted to make that.
The data is pretty immediate. So as soon as, as soon as the testing window closes, we have, I mean, we have the data. So if the testing is in the end of May, as soon as the window is done, we have the data.
Okay.
And iReady, it's one of the nice things about iReady is like, you click a button and it creates those charts.
So how do we share this inform, has this information already gone home to parents to let them know where their individual student stands immediately after they take these tests?
So in the fall, we haven't sent the winter letters yet, but in the fall we sent home the, their iReady scores in the fall. iReady creates a parent letter that explains the, the testing on it. So we did send that home right around report card time for the fall one, but we haven't, we haven't done the winter one just yet.
And that's something we're going to do though?
When it goes up, we'll be doing it.
Yeah, okay. And maybe, I know as, as a mom, I'm sometimes taken by surprise. My kids will come home and tell me that they had an iReady assessment today, which I don't think helps us as a district. Cause there are days where I think to myself, well, gosh, if I had known that, probably would have gone to bed a little earlier last night. So I think, you know, just as, and that's not all the time, right? And so take it for what it is. If it happens once, maybe, maybe it just stuck in my head. But maybe that level of awareness, I think of things, right, from like this before, during and after. So the before step being really pre-gaming, pre-gaming with students, pre-gaming with families, getting them prepared and in the right headspace to be taking this test. And the during, I don't know if there's any way that we can make the iReady day more fun. Maybe they can chew gum that day. Sorry to even bring it up. I'm sure nobody likes that idea or Jolly Rancher, something that makes it, something that is going to be, something that they somehow strangely look forward to, even though it's not the most fun thing that they're going to be actually doing with their time. And then that after piece, of course, of processing those results, not only with the individual students, but with families, which again, I know is very time-consuming, but it's, it's a level of awareness that I don't think I have, I have experienced as, as either a parent or, or through my kids and my kids are young. Certainly I get the information and when I have questions, I'm able to ask them. But it would be a much more purposeful and deliberate communication strategy.
Any other questions or comments about this?
Through the chair.
Ms. Mina?
I just have a question. Is there, do you have data that separates students on IEPs that take the iReady compared to the regular classroom student?
Right. It's, it's harder for us. It's not an automatic like MCAS because MCAS delivers the data by subgroup and iReady doesn't. But we can internally do it. So we have created, Michelle Budney in our office creates report groups. And so it just takes a little bit more analysis to make the comparisons. But certainly when we know, when we know that like a particular group is in a class, so that can be done by like the classroom teacher, it can be done by the special ed teacher. Not just for IEPs though, but students that are Ls. And iReady does have a, a particular function that if we, if students have enough literacy in their language and it's only for Spanish, they can take the math one in Spanish so that we're testing their math and not how well they understood the English for the math, because it's not a reading test. So, so we break it down so that we can have that analysis. So I know that the L teachers take a look at their students and compare them to the non-Ls. The special educators compare them. Where I think we need to go is a broader conversation because the special ed teachers can talk about it, the L teachers can talk about it, but we all need to talk about it because the students are in all the classrooms. And so that is a, a place where we hear that iReady is going to be having that capacity next year. So let's hope, you know, let's look forward to that and make that analysis a lot easier. So, so the answer is not immediately, but we need to do it, like figuring it out in different ways.
They're all together right now?
They're all together. Yeah. They're all together by, you can do it like by grade or by class. And so, but if there's no marker on it, that can extrapolate out, you know, certain subgroups. But that's, that would be a good thing for them to do.
That would be very helpful if they could do that.
Through the chair, and just to address that point, because I liked the presentation as it is, but it is good to know that the staff is able to look at those different subgroups because that's really where the analysis comes in anyway versus looking at even grade levels as a whole. But then just my final question was, how confident are you that when we review the data in the spring that it will look significantly improved?
Well, this is my first year in the high school, so honestly, I'm not quite sure. I'm hoping that it'll look different. I'm hoping that it'll, we'll have more students on or above grade level or even one grade level below. That's something that's easy to, it's much easier. If they're one grade level below, I think the gap is much smaller. So I mean, I would be confident, I would hope with the steps that we're making, that we could see some improvement in those areas.
Yeah, I'd have to agree. I think that you're going to see some growth. I just don't think you're going to see the huge jump that everyone, that immediate jump that we want to see. I think, like I said, it's, it's a slow movement that happens. But I do think with all of the steps that everyone's been taking and the hard work they've been putting in, you will see some growth. And then I think as we progress into the next year and after that, that's where you're going to start seeing. When these things have been sustained for a while, the new protocols, the way that we're administering the tests, that we that we're using the data, the way that we're using, you know, these high-quality curriculums, that's when you're going to start seeing more. We're still in the, you know, I think it was, Dr. Gogan said, we are in a turnaround. This is turnaround. And so, you know, we haven't been doing this, you know, with fidelity as long as we need to, to see the big jumps. But I do think confidently that we will see improvement in the spring.
I do think that in K and one, you'll see a, a big jump because the foundational skills is the easiest, it's the easiest to lift. As you go up two, three, four, it's, it's going to slowly slow down because it's much harder. It's harder every year. It's much harder to close that gap. So K and one definitely have the, the best chance of making the most growth.
In our levels, you know, the students struggle. The reason why they're, you know, below grade level is on their comprehension, not on their fluency and their ability to decode, you know, words. So most of them can read words on the page. It's the comprehension, it's the vocabulary. So we've noticed as a, as a district as a whole, our vocabulary skills in our students are probably the biggest deficit, but it's also, I think, the easiest lift. And that's one of the areas on one of the upcoming PEDs that we're going to be addressing as a whole. And that's one of the areas on one of the upcoming PEDs that we're going to be addressing as a whole with all of the content area teachers. We're going to be addressing what it looks like to have literacy across the curriculum, across all content areas, because many of our teachers are saying, you know, my kids, I can't believe the vocabulary that they don't know at their age. And that we're talking to science teachers, social studies teachers. It's an everybody problem right now. So we've heard that feedback and we see those, that data in our results. And so as a result, we're offering PD with one of our consulting companies that's going to primarily focus on, how do you beef up your vocabulary instruction in your classroom so that you can see those gains for those students? So if, I'm really confident that if we start incorporating just that one small change of incorporating more, a more vocabulary-rich environment for all the students, then we will see significant growth.
Through the chair.
Ms. Mallett?
Just from them talking, I got another question.
Yeah, please. This is really, really important, so I appreciate you all taking all these questions. They're, I think generally questions for everyone, but thank you.
It's my scenario. So the student, say you have a student in third grade. They're gonna take that spring test, then they're gonna go to fourth grade. Do the fourth grade teachers have access to their third grade iReady scores?
Yep.
To help?
Yes.
For that information? They do get them?
Yep. Plus, and then in the fall, they'll take it right away as well. So they'll have the, like, where they came from in third, but they'll also have like their new fourth grade, like how they, how they perform in the new one.
How do they get those? Do they get them on the program?
The program goes back a year or two. And you can go back.
And look at historical data, yeah.
We also, we also have documents at Park Ave, and I'm sure you guys do too, that, that has all the data that the student, they can look at and be given at the beginning of the year so that the teachers have an idea of what their students are capable of at that second.
And in the high school, and I don't, don't wanna jump in and say this by all means, but we use it as predictor data for us. We use that to tell us in an MCAS subject where we think students might land. And then it's a, it's a jumping point in August for us to look at what the BOY, the MOY, and the ELY will look like. But it allows us to make a little bit of a prediction. So we use that, and that's part of our first planning with them in terms of what our PLCs look like for those tested areas.
Very good. I think that's very important.
Agreed. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of more things, too. Is there, is there analysis being done at the cohort level by the district? I mean, is that something that we're looking at to see how kids are progressing through the same audience, basically, through each grade level?
We're using data from those graphs at each grade level. The cohort tracks students, track them. They don't have to sync from year to the next. We have to dissect and track what it is.
But, but this year's third grade is next year's fourth grade?
So yes, data that we track.
The last presentation you had on iReady, I believe, was that cohort data.
Okay.
And what we, the important thing is exactly what Dr. Gogan said before, that it's, you can't really, although it feels like, we feel like students did worse in the fall than they did in the spring, but you have to look at like this cohort in fourth grade. Let's look at, let's compare beginning of the year to beginning of the year third grade. Let's compare middle of the year to middle of the year third grade. Because at the beginning of the year, they're being tested on new standards.
Right.
And it doesn't necessarily match what they just mastered at the end of the year. So, so that's not, that's not a, it's not a comparison that's so accessible. So what we do follow, we have that data that we, we, which was, I think, the last presentation where we did the entire district. So where was?
We could do that with DIBELS, though.
Yep, yep.
Because it is the same.
Students are coming close to grade level. And then that's really does talk. Does it tend? Is it tense? Or low? Content gets a little, also time. Time, whether it's after school or the RTI block. We had even gone to the union to ask them to change their working schedule with all the guess or funds to add an additional half hour of school across the district a day this year so that we could do that extra intervention later. And it's a combination of all of the.
Could you just repeat?
Things go back to the schedule. I'll summarize. They do. And, you know, I think we've really, as a team, have been looking at difficult data and really digging deep. And everyone's rolling their sleeves up to rectify and do what's best. There isn't a person in this district that doesn't work hard for kids. You know, the work is around tier one instruction. So, you know, I will just end this on by saying this is one slice of multiple measures of looking at student growth in our district. So, you know, as you continue, you can look at cohort data and MCAS data again to see if those trends continue. But there are different structures in place that have been, have not been in place. So I'm optimistic that there will be progressive growth.
So one other way that we might look at this, and maybe this is already happening, too, is by classroom. You know, everyone's style is different. And just like I said, that you all don't own this data, nor do teachers. But there may be certain styles or certain things that are really working well or not working so well. Is that something that is informing your coaching?
Yes. So we're getting into classrooms, at least, I'm trying to get into classrooms to go and observe teachers and give them a bite-sized piece of feedback that they can take and something actionable that they can take right away. But again, scheduling is always the barrier when it comes to that. So I can walk into every single classroom in the entire day, but the challenge for me is sitting down with that teacher outside of their prep time and not walking with them, you know, in hall duty to give them their feedback about what kind of steps they can make to adjust their instruction. So yes, we want to get into classrooms. That's what we do and that's what we're trying to do. And we're seeing a lot of small changes that we can offer as, hey, why don't we try this strategy? But it's, the scheduling is just the biggest barrier for us and it's time. We want to sit down with those teachers and give them that immediate feedback within a reasonable timeframe of us visiting their rooms. And it's just really hard to coordinate that with their schedule without taking their prep time.
But they are looking at that data. I mean, I know I put together for each individual teacher, grade level, shared out their own data with their teams. And they're having conversations with me and with each other about like, oh, I had a couple percentage drop from green, so what am I doing in tier one to change that? Oh, look at, I had some move into the yellow. What did I do here that I think's working? How am I changing my small group? And so those conversations are constantly happening with the teachers. They are, they are owning their own data. They really are. And they're looking at it and saying, okay, this is like, oh, I'm really proud this moved and oh, this doesn't look so hot. So what am I gonna do differently and what are you doing in your classroom and you doing? So I know that the teachers are working hard. We're having these conversations with the data during CPTs. Again, it is time, like, you know, teachers need time to be able to make these changes as well. But I know at the middle school, and I'm assuming at the others, they really do own this. They really do want to see what their individual classes are doing and what it's doing in comparison to the other people that are teaching the same classes. And it's not a like, oh, I'm doing better or worse. It's a, okay, this is what worked for me. This is what worked for you. Can we use these strategies and make moves together? And so, you know, they are owning the data. Everyone, everyone's owning it as their data. And how are we fixing this and how are we moving kids forward?
Not to be an extender, but just on that point, sorry. On that point, like Ruthann was saying, or Dr. Gogan was saying, and then Dr. Mackay, this isn't just the only data point. I think the most important changes that we're making are aligning our departments with a common assessment on the curriculum that they're teaching. And I think that's the most important, because our curriculum, it gives you standards-based data right after the student takes their test for study sync, for example, for English. So those are the, those are the common assessments that are the most important, because that's an immediate change then shift that we can make to our instruction in the moment without waiting three months for our next benchmark test.
Thank you. Thank you all. You know, I know that it's a heavy lift and it is turnaround work, as Dr. Gogan pointed out. And appreciate, the, the presentation was, as Ms. Naparata put it, very well organized and easy to understand. And thank you for presenting it and answering our multitude of questions. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Well, thank you again. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Nice job.
So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. I will let you know for our personnel update that we have hired Cassandra Sawyer as an ABA at Park Ave Elementary School, Sarah St. Germain as an ABA at Park Ave Elementary School, Scott DeCosta as the district BCBA, and Julie Wunsch as the assistant cook at Park Ave. We have received resignations from Peter Tuagar, the music band teacher at Bartlett, Melissa Kirkland, an ABA at Webster Middle School, and Robert Benoit, the special education transition 18 to 22 teacher at Bartlett. We heard a lot about instructional leadership and instructional work being done just through this presentation tonight. I will just add that there are ongoing and endless meetings that are focused around the work in tier one and supporting our coaches. We have TNTP meetings, we have GLEAM meetings. Today, Dr. Mackay and I had a progress monitoring meeting on our TAD grants with our SaaS team to look at how are we meeting our benchmarks. Again, I think I will share out that I think we've done a lot of good work this year, especially in bucket number one, in terms of creating safe learning environments. I'm very pleased about the PBIS teams and the work that's being done to have consistent code of conducts and expectations in our building, less discipline and more time for kids to be in the classroom. There's been great progress with that. We now have a valid measurable way with educators handbook. Thank you to Mr. Collins for bringing that to our district of looking at discipline data and behaviors, because behaviors speak to what's going on with kids. We've made some great gains in that area. Our second bucket, we do the safe learning environment in service of the second bucket, as we were talking about today, to ensure that our students are afforded the opportunities to have grade level content and that they're engaged and they're doing the majority of the thinking. And some of our next steps with our coaches will include really looking at the work of what students are doing. What is that work? What is the evidence? So there's been a lot of things going on for instructional leadership under family and engagement. I would just like to let you know, and Ms. Peterson may mention this, I want to give a shout out to Emma Pachico. The Webster Middle School chorus was able to sing at the Worcester Railers game on last Friday. And they sang the National Anthem, and we were very proud of them. And I'm very proud of the student that I'm sitting next to here. And I'm very pleased to say that Victoria Spitz has been selected as my superintendent scholar, because she's awesome and she rocks. And I'm just gonna say a few little words about you, and I will try not to embarrass you. But you're a great role model for other students. And you work hard, you're, you're very committed to your education, and you're somebody that we're really proud of. Victoria is a National Honor Society student. She's the vice president of the Webster chapter. She is also the president of Bartlett DECA club, and she placed fifth in the category. And she's going to the state-level DECA competition in March, which is really fun. Victoria is also a Nichols Honors Academy leader, and she has been since she was a freshman. Victoria received the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award in 2022. This organization stresses community values and a strong work ethic which you embody. Victoria is a three-season varsity athlete. She's been playing basketball for four years. She's been the captain her junior and senior years. She's been playing softball for four years, and she will be named the captain along with her fellow seniors and teammates this season. She's also been playing volleyball and the captain of her junior and senior years. And she plays golf, and she is the captain her senior year. And she's also served our school committee as a student rep very well. We're so proud of you. The superintendent's luncheon will be forthcoming. Your picture and all this good news about you is gonna be in a brochure that you will receive. I will unfortunately not be here to take you to lunch, but Mr. Collins will be taking you to lunch on my behalf. And we are so proud of you, and you carry the Barton name so very well. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you so much for nominating, taking the master candidate.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
In other updates, I would like to let you know that we are bringing an enrollment express online option to the district. We're in the process of creating the enrollment online process for our parents and guardians. All of our current enrollment forms have been created and uploaded into Power School. I want to give a shout out to Desiree Moniz for pushing this initiative. She, along with Maria Santir and Stacy Quilty, are working as a team on this new project. They will be pulling the nurses in to figure out the logistics on the medical paperwork. This gives new enrollment online process will eventually appear on our new website, which will be under the registration tab. We'll create another option for our parents for ease. I want to also give you an update on our new website. I had hoped that that would have been out and displayed prior to my departure, but it won't be, but it's coming. The new website has been mapped out as January, as of January 25th. Any new information after January 25th will need to be manually added to the site. The new host is final site. They're doing work to give us the exact date of when it will be completed. I want to give a shout out to Michelle Budney for managing a lot of the work on this and working with the school website masters. And on the Bartlett High School renovation, we attended a MSBA and DESI meeting last week, last Friday, to discuss Chapter 74 spaces. It was a very good meeting. We came out of the meeting with a list of to-dos in terms of our Chapter 74 programming. But I think the meeting went really well with our OPM and our designer, and we made some new connections at DESI with the Chapter 74 lead. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just have a question about band music teacher at Bartlett. Is that position going to be a new hire?
It's been posted for a long-term sub for the rest of the year.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item I have for you tonight is a building committee update. The committee did meet on February 2nd to review our building project as it stands. We, a big part of our conversation for that meeting was our modular classrooms and the bids that came in. We had budgeted 2.75 million for our modulators. We had two solid bidders come in, one bidder, which we know has a reputable bidder, and we used them for our Park Ave project, Triumph Modulators. The bad news is it came in 2.2 million over budget. So the lowest bid was 4.9 million, and after that, the next bid was 5.8 million. So in order to proceed with this project, we have to act quickly and move on that. So there was a lot of discussion around how would we make up that difference. We do have some owner contingency money that we have currently, there's 2 million in owner contingency. We have 4 million in construction contingency. The decision was made at that point to temporarily take some of that, take the owner contingency and put that toward the modular bids. And then down the road, if there's any value engineering or other sources of funds that we are looking at, we'll address those and hopefully be able to replenish that owner contingency. But we did sign the contract. We did move forward in order to meet our timeline, because the other option was refusing bids and going back out the bid, which would have delayed months. And they are not seeing any changes in those bids. They didn't think it would be any beneficial. That's what they're seeing with the. That's what they're seeing with the market right now. So we made the decision to move forward with that. Next, we also have had, it's been pretty active around here, surveyors have been out around the grounds, surveying the grounds. They were here today finishing up and cleaning up the holes that they dug around campus to do soil testing. They cleaned that up. We have a few meetings scheduled. We have a meeting scheduled on February 22nd for the MEP. That's the Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Engineers. They're going to be out reviewing our systems and talking to our head custodian. We're also going to have a hardware meeting on February 24th. That's to review security systems and any kind of things we might need for the modular. And then on March 1st, we have a food service consultant coming out and touching base with food service director. So those have just been scheduled this week, and we are on track. It is picking up and becoming very active on the project. Are there any questions about the project?
Questions or comments from the committee?
Next item is maintenance. Unfortunately, it's also been a little bit of a busy time for maintenance. So at Park Ave, we did have a couple of roof leaks that we had looked at. We worked with the company who installed the roof, Greenwood Industries. They came out and took a look. One of those will be covered under warranty. The other one was a minor fix. They fixed it on-site. That would not be covered under warranty. It looks like something maybe hit the roof and cut something. So they fixed that and repaired the roof leaks. We do have a contractor coming in next week to fix all the wet tiles that were in the hallway that were removed from the damage from the HVAC. So we finally got somebody coming in to fix that and replace those tiles. At the middle school, we have another rooftop down, the library rooftop. That's been kind of a thorn in our side. They've been out to fix that a couple down. It tripped a fuse again, so there's no heat in the library. They're coming back again tomorrow to take a look at that. We also had a clogged bathroom in the 7th and 83rd wing, so we had to shut down those bathrooms. They've shut down the girls' room, and the staff bathroom is now the boys' bathroom is open, if I'm remembering correctly. But it appears that I got to, one of the exciting things about my job is I got to be over there today and look at the little scope that went through our storage pipe out to the main road and track that camera. It was pretty exciting. But what's happened over time is it looks like the ground has dipped in a couple of spots. So we have a dip that's in the school under the hallway, which is not great, but they think we can bypass that with getting some more powerful flushometers that'll push more water through our pipes to get it out to the system. But then once you get out of the building, we have two sections of, they think it was caused by frost heaves, where there's big dips, and the water's just not flowing great. So we're hoping we can get through the remainder of the year and then maybe get some contractors out in the spring or summer to repair that. It appears to be like about eight feet of pipe to dig that up and to fix that. So we're on top of that. We will be opening up the girls' bathrooms. Any clogs have been removed. We're ordering the new flushometers, which will push more water through. Those will be put in at break hopefully next week. So the girls' bathroom and hopefully the staff bathroom will be open after that and get us through to the end of the year till we can have a more permanent fix for that. And then at the high school, it's been not terrible, but we did have a frozen pipe over break, over the weekend, the cold weekend. Luckily, the guys were doing building checks on both days. They came in on Sunday, and there was a pipe leaking out in the back room by the custodial area. So if you remember, a few years back, we had water shut-offs put in because this building doesn't have any shut-offs, so we were really excited about having some water main shut-offs put in so that if we ever had a leak, we could shut the water off, and we didn't have to call the water department. So when they showed up on Sunday, we had a leak. They thought immediately, great, we can finally use the shut-off, only to learn that the break was before the shut-off, so we still had to call the water department to come out and shut the water off to the entire building. They reacted very quickly, so I appreciate their quick response. I want to thank the water department for that. And then the plumber also came out rather quickly. So in a few hours, we had the leak contained, cleaned up, and fixed. So nobody was the wiser who was happening as normal on Monday. So I just want to thank the custodians for their quick action. I want to thank the water department for coming out so quickly and for Spal Plumbing to just kind of drop what he was doing. He said it was a very busy weekend, but he made sure that we were up and running and ready for Monday. So an active couple of weeks there, but hopefully we are fixing everything and getting back on track with everything. And then just under other updates, we did get our food service review in, so I am working with the food service director on that. We met to go through that. Some of the items already have been fixed. There is one that we haven't had confirmation yet that we might be getting a financial adjustment to, because that was the beans, the legumes, that we didn't serve that week. You have to meet the meal pattern, or they can have a financial adjustment to that. So we're waiting to hear. It's not set in stone yet. They were discussing it at a higher level, and they'll let us know. But what that would mean is that that week's menu, where the legumes were short, they would take that dollar value of meals away from us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangely.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, we will move on. Our next item on the agenda is our principal report. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to actually flip the A and B, if you don't mind, and start with talking about learning walks, because it does go along with what we talked about earlier in the data. So for many years at WMS, we have been, the staff has been doing learning walks, and that entails the instructional leadership team and admin and the SSOS team going into classrooms and observing and coming back with feedback for the entire staff. So the purpose is to look at teaching trends schoolwide. It's not an observational or evaluational tool. It's simply to look at trends, and it's another piece of data for us in teaching and learning. So last year, we actually started including teachers who aren't on the ILT in the process, so teachers whose rooms we had been in multiple times. We wanted them to be on the, quote, "other side of things" and take part in the learning walk as an observer as well. And so this year, we've changed the model a little bit again, and including a veteran staff member and a new staff member in the process. So the reason that we've been changing this a little bit is because my long-range goal for learning walks is to make this more collegial piece of our daily life, and so that it's not just a once-a-month thing when SaaS comes or central admin comes over, that it becomes something ingrained in the staff, that there's flow in and out of rooms and collegial and collaborative conversations. So again, it's another thing that we have to do in baby steps so that everybody's calibrated and doing things in a structured way, not haphazard, that everybody has the same focus. Can't be going into rooms and looking at all different things. So it's a very carefully orchestrated event when we do learning walks. Every classroom we go in is 20 minutes, no more, no less, and then we do a 15-minute debrief between each classroom, and then we do a full debrief at the end. So what we do is we, at the beginning of the day, we meet as a whole team to discuss our look-fours, which are our focus areas, and they're always structured around our building and district goals. And so what we're looking at this year is what we've discussed already this evening, the overall umbrella of student engagement with a sense of belonging, with opportunities and supports that promote higher-order thinking. So those are our focus areas this year. So what we're doing is, when we go in, we are looking at what students are doing, and we're looking at what teachers are doing. And then we're talking about those things, what we see. So we meet as a team to develop afterwards a general feedback, which we then, the team develops, but I send out to the staff so that they get an overall feeling for what's happening. And so what we've been doing is we kind of lay out data. So for an example, we say nine out of 12 classrooms, we saw this, three out of 12 classrooms, we saw this, five out of classrooms, we saw this. We had talked about switching it to percents, but we already started with the fractions in the beginning of the year, so we wanted to make sure, again, staying with that continuity so staff was familiar with what we're reporting out. And so then we've also added this year, more than just giving them what we saw, we feel like it is time for our staff to look at where areas are to improve as well. So we are adding things, we call it "to consider," and so it's kind of a, not a long-range goal, but kind of a more in-depth goal for everyone. So on this past learning walk, our consideration was looking at student writing. And so what does that look like across the curriculum? So writing isn't just in English Language Arts. It should be taking place in every content area. And so the question we posed to the staff was to think about how to model questioning to encourage more than surface-level questioning. So that's what we want to work on as an ILT. And then we also included what we're calling "quick wins." So what can you do, what can our staff do as a teacher, something immediately tomorrow to change something in your classroom? And so this past one was, again, connecting it to using writer skills, writing skills to give all students higher opportunity, opportunity for higher-order thinking. And so we took that information with our faculty meeting last week, and we talked about using writing and how to use writing in different areas. We, a little bit of surface level, we have more to delve into. And then we had a half-day PD this past Friday, and so we have been, again, at the middle school, we've really been focusing on Connections Over Compliance, that big umbrella. And we're doing a book study, and it's called Connections Over Compliance. We took a break from that this past time, because what we did is we kind of did a speed dating kind of thing, where I sent the staff out to go into, first, their own classroom and sit in the student desk and look around their room, and, you know, what do you see in your classroom environment? Are there equitable opportunities for everybody? Are images diverse, representing the students? Is it a learning environment? If it's a science room, are there science things? Are tools and scaffolds available? They had a whole list of things to look at. And then every 10 minutes, they rotated and went to another classroom, and at the end of the 10, they visited five classrooms and their own. And then we came up with, they worked in teams, and then they came up with a list, two lists. The first list was without mentioning names, classrooms, grade levels, just kind of, again, overall trends that they saw. So the first list was, wow, this is what we saw, and they made that list. And the second list was, wow, this is what we saw. So the same wording, different toning, so things that we need to improve on. It was a very successful, very open conversation, and the purpose wasn't to call people out. The purpose was to have people self-reflect and think. And then we opened up the conversation, and that's really what happened. We had people saying, you know, I have pictures of this, but this person actually has pictures of their kids in their classroom. So just minor things like that is a quick little, quick little switch. So that's what we've been working on in learning walks. So before I move on to B, questions about learning walks and where we're going with all of that.
Thank you for that, Ms. Peterson. Sounds like some great work going on. Any questions or comments from the committee?
To the chair.
Ms. Mallett?
I don't know if you do this, but under one principle, I had several over the years, they actually kind of put it out there that any teacher who wanted to was welcome, and they would find coverage if you wanted to go into another classroom and observe a lesson, something you might be having difficulty with. If you haven't done that, I guess my suggestion is, you know, maybe to consider having that an option.
Yeah, that is eventually, like I said, the route we want to go. I want to be careful with just sending people out willy-nilly, and we really need to stay focused on certain things and what we're looking for. So that is the eventual goal, making sure that we, as the ILT, are training staff to be specific in what they're looking for and confidential in those things.
Well, I guess this is more of a curriculum piece.
Yeah, so again, still, it needs to remain focused and on track with what the whole school is doing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee before Ms. Peterson moves on with her updates?
And just so, the next thing, again, a focus on belonging and the great things that are happening at Webster Middle School. Last week was filled with wonderful things. So we had our first go-around at a whole-school bingo kind of tournament. So everybody was allowed to have a free card, but students who wanted extra cards were able to use their Roar Wildcat PBIS tickets that they have earned to purchase extra cards. And with those purchases, they had better prizes, I guess. So if they won bingo, they got gift cards. If they didn't have their extra cards, they got candy and chips. And so everybody had the opportunity to participate. The teachers were calling the bingo over Zoom, so it was really cool to be walking in the hall and just hearing like, "Bee, 29!" And the kids, all grade levels, were really into it and enjoyed it. So that was a fun thing on a half a day to do on Friday. We also had, our eighth grade earned extra recess, because what happens is when they purchase things at the school store with their Roar tickets, we have vases in the entrance of our school, and if they reach a certain amount, they get extra recess, and then another amount is a movie or something extra. So the eighth grade had a little extra recess on Friday. Last Thursday, I think it was, we had our Student of the Month breakfast, so students who had been recognized the last couple of months, we had a breakfast, which was very well-attended. Dr. Gogan mentioned that our course was at the Railers on Friday night, and we had a really great representation of staff members there as well. So some fun things, building relationships. We had our first experience with our half-day lunch, and so I was a little nervous about that, but it actually went off really well. At the middle school, what we did is we started calling students down by grade level at 10 o'clock, which is an hour before dismissal, and teachers were able to say to their kids, get your lunch and come back, or stay in the cafeteria. We took, I took a poll, a survey before we made that suggestion, and as our surveys at the middle school always do, they come back, like 47%, 53%. So I said, well, then that's what we'll do. You have the choice to tell your kids what you're going to do. So as the cafeteria emptied out, I just called the next grade, the next grade, and it went really well. So coming up this week, we have our Spirit Week, which we always do before winter vacation, and it's focused on kindness. Yesterday was Sportsmanship Day. Today was compliments going along with Valentine's Day. Tomorrow's focus is Think Before You Speak, because it's Crazy Hair Day, so think about the comments you make, make sure you're being kind. Thursday is Dreaming of Kindness, Pyjama Day. And then Friday is Class Color Day and our annual Around the World And then Friday is Class Color Day and our annual Around the World Tournament. So that'll be great. And then we have, at the end of the month after vacation, a student group had come forward and asked if they could do something to celebrate Black History Month. And so they have been working daily with Mrs. Bergeron, trying to come up with a plan and something to build people's cultures. And so we'll have a culture day where we're encouraging kids to dress where something that represents their culture. And then I've been working with a group at Nichols, one of the diversity coordinators, and we've been working, she happens to be one of our students' mentors. And so I've been working with her to try to get Nichols students to come in and talk a little bit about diversity. So hopefully, we'll get that happening in March. So a lot going on.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just have a comment that I would love to see a picture of the Students of the Month in our local paper.
I'm glad you said that, Mrs. Mallett, because I've been posting them. So over the weekend, I didn't have all the pictures when I do my weekly memo, so I just put a list and said pictures to come. So I've been posting daily on Dojo, kind of like a teaser kind of thing. But I actually just asked my secretary, who has the contact information, is out sick, so as soon as she's back in, I will be sending that stuff off, so.
That's a great idea. Ms. Peterson, I'd just like to compliment you and the team on the PBIS events. I know they're a source of excitement for the students and I'm sure a motivator to earn more Wildcat tickets. And also reiterate the shout-out for Ms. Pacheco. It was great. I had a chorus student there and lots of other kids that I care about that were singing that night, but really a great experience, not only for my family and my student, but also just to see so many staff. Ms. Perangeli, you were there, and there were so many other teachers and folks from all the schools. So really, really amazing event, really great. So thank you for everything and for your updates. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll move into old business. And the next item on the agenda under old business is the monthly report on fundraising applications. As a reminder, it is the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building level.
Mark your calendars, Empty Bowls is coming on April 14th. That fundraiser is happening, and also they had a National Honor Society Valentine Candy Sale over at the high school.
Great. And then the next item on the agenda is the FY '24 Budget Final Review.
We had presented the budget and brought it back and forth to the school committee since January. The final budget numbers are $25,313.83. That represents a 5.17 increase over last year, and it's the final review for the school committee. Having said that, the budget numbers from the state are not in. It is a fluid process, as you know. I think April 14th is the public hearing for the school committee, so there's time to add additional changes as we go along. But I think for purposes of bringing it to the town, typically, the school committee votes on this budget.
So I actually wasn't here at the last meeting. I couldn't find the final budget in the packet. I don't think so. Maybe we can just... Oh.
Through the chair.
If it's the same as last, I can look at the, I did look at it the last time. I just, okay, wasn't sure if there was any changes. Thanks. Okay.
And this is the third draft review or final budget review?
This is, go ahead. Put on as fine. Don't have to say.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Now, it says final review here. Are you looking for a vote? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the final budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laura, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, motion passes. Thank you for all the work that goes into that budget. The next item on the agenda under old business is a report from the Superintendent Search Committee. I'd like to begin just by, you know, first of all, acknowledging I was a member and the chair of that search committee, and would like to thank the community members, the parents, teachers, administrators that came out and devoted a significant amount of time, not only at the meetings, but prior to the meetings, reviewing things. And it's a heavy lift. It's one of the most important things, I think, that is done at the district level. And I also would be remiss if I didn't thank the applicants, not all of whom will be named publicly, but we were very fortunate to have a large group of very qualified applicants that expressed an interest in working and leading this district. So I'm very thankful, and I think it demonstrates that Webster is a wonderful place to be. And with that being said, we received 23 applications. The superintendency application process, the deadline was January 27th, and we received all of the applications independently and reviewed them over the weekend of the 28th and the 29th. And then the search committee met on Monday, January 30th to deliberate and select semifinalists. We selected those semifinalists in executive session and proceeded to interview them. The interviews took place on the evenings of February 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th. On February 9th, following our last interview, we deliberated and unanimously recommended the following slate of four finalists for the Webster Superintendency. These candidates will be moving forward to be considered by the school committee. The first candidate, these are in alphabetical order, is Carrie Allen. Carrie Allen is the current principal of the Goddard School of Science and Technology in Worcester, and she has held that position since 2016. Steve Lamarche is the current superintendent of the Dudley-Chailton Regional School District, and he has been in that role since 2019. Deanna LeBlanc is the Director of Curriculum for Gateway Regional School District in Huntington, Massachusetts, and she's held that role since 2019. And our own Monique Perangeli, who is our current Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, and has held that role since 2018. We have public applications that are available for people who would like to see them. They're redacted and just, you know, show the information that needs to be seen. And then Tracy Novick is here, joining us from MASCE, to walk us through the remainder of this process because arguably, a lot of the hard work has been done, but there is still hard work that remains to be done. And Tracy will walk us through that now.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to echo your thanks to the search committee. They were a good group that did some hard work over a short period of time and had some thoughtful deliberation over the course of their time together. So in terms of next steps, so you do obviously have an upcoming week in which Massachusetts Public Schools largely are not actually around. And so we will not be doing any of the next steps during that time, but what it does do is give us a little bit of a breathing space to do a little bit more planning. So the next part of the search is for members of the school committee in non-quorum groups to go visit the home districts. Is this not working? Can you hear me? Is it me, or is it the microphone?
You have to really, you have to get up close with the mic.
Okay, it's me. It's good to make sure you have a school committee that knows you well enough to say, no, actually, it's you. Yes, so the next steps will be for, for visits really to go in both directions. So every finalist will visit the Webster Public Schools while the Webster Public Schools are actually in session. They will spend time in each of the school buildings, spend some time with the principals, visit the classrooms, meet students, meet staff. Will spend some time meeting central administration. I would recommend that we also make them available for a meet-and-greet on their day here, so that members of the community can also come and introduce themselves to them, meet them, get a sense of who it is that there is being considered. At the same time, over the same period of time, non-quorum groups of the school committee will be visiting the home districts of each of the finalists. You will be effectively then be spending time with people within that district who can speak to the candidacy of that individual, giving you as much as possible a 360-degree view of that individual and their ability to fulfill the position of Webster Superintendent. So in both cases, the timeframe that we have is for the plan for that to be happening during the week after February vacation, which I need to stop referring to as the first week of March because it isn't. And we would conduct that first before we move into interviews. That way, you actually have that experience already, have had that information available to you before you then move into interviews. And as you are aware, interviews, we were planning on having during that, really what is the first full week of March for you to be able to then make your decision. Because you do have four finalists, really, it will be up to the committee to determine, although some of this will also have to do with the degree to which the district can manage the scheduling. It is possible for you to do two interviews, two interviews, either make a decision right away after that, or make a decision on a third evening. Another thing that districts sometimes will choose to do, and this will, again, partly depend on the district's ability to host, is that they will choose to actually do a day of the person visiting the district with an interview that evening, and then effectively do that four times. That's another option that is available to you. We can work around scheduling. All of the finalists not only have confirmed their wish to continue to participate, because that's always the question, but also are sort of standing by for my communication to them in terms of them making the plans, both to host and also to make themselves available to come visit the district. And Madam Chair, I am happy to take any questions you all may have, and I'm also happy to start to have a conversation around dates right now if you wish, or we can also do that via email, whatever is most convenient for the committee.
Tracy, just one point of clarification. We had talked about the visits the week after February vacation, which would be the week of the 27th of February, and then interviews, actually, the week of the 13th of March, just due to availability.
So is that what we had on the original schedule? Am I skipping a week?
I think...
So there is another week in there, right?
There is a week in there that we have availability issues.
Okay.
The week of the 6th.
The week of the 6th, we have availability issues?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For everyone, or for the... Okay.
For some members of the committee.
Okay. So that would mean then that, so to what degree is the, will the, the outline as sort of right now would be for us to do, to see if we can actually get people into districts the week of the 27th? And then, so then what you are saying then is that we would need to not be doing interviews the week of the 6th and actually do them the week of the 13th instead? Is that correct?
If that's possible.
Okay.
Are there questions or comments from the committee? First of all, regarding the process and that type of thing, before we go into schedule.
Through the chair. So how long would the visits entail to the other districts?
Thank you for asking that question. So generally speaking, what we tell the finalists is to plan on having you for effectively the length of a school day.
Okay.
That can be flexible if less time is available from the school committee's perspective.
Okay.
But that is sort of what they are at this point outlining.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Through the chair. So would there be multiple visits since there cannot be quorums in the visits to the districts?
No, there would be one visit in each case, and I would leave it to you all to determine who it is that can and can't go places with each other, although, again, the degree to which you're visiting something that's actually under your purview in terms of a subcommittee is, as I would say, questionable. It's really more a question of the full committee. So in other words, having two of you go somewhere is fine. I wouldn't send three of you.
And then in terms of the scheduling of the candidates' visit to this district, where we do want to make those, provide those opportunities for the community to meet the candidates, what is the timing typically of those, of that availability for the community?
So similarly, generally, I mean, superintendent finalists want to see the district in session, right? So we want to make sure that they're here for the school day. Usually, I try to focus the school day portion on, you know, getting them through the schools, making sure that they've actually seen who they need to, done the meetings that they need to during what effectively is the business day. Sessions that are allowing the public to meet, usually you want to either, if you start after school, that gives your staff a chance, potentially kind of as they're leaving, but before they're out the door, to do that if they don't feel that they've had an opportunity. If you move a little bit more into the evening, obviously, that makes it a little bit more convenient for families. And the degree to which, sort of how that timing works, will flex depending on whether or not you all decide that you want to try to do the interviews at the end of each of those days. Although I would say what you may want to do instead, if we were looking at interviews the week of the 13th, is to sort of say, let's plan on getting the visits through on the week of the 27th through the 3rd, take the week of the 6th to the 10th as a sort of break in the action, and then plan on the week of the 13th being the interviews. And that part, I'm thinking out loud as I'm looking at the calendar.
Sure.
All right. So I did want to share with the committee and the community that I will be filing a non-disclosure statement with the town clerk because I do work with one of the finalists, Dr. Carrie Allen from Worcester. We have worked in the same building over the past years. Most recently, we do not work in the same school. And I just want to disclose that, you know, I still feel confident in my ability to not have that influence either my decision or the committee's decision, and that ultimately I am one member of this committee and, along with everybody, want to select the best superintendent for Webster Public Schools.
Excellent.
Thank you, Ms. Napperata.
And thank you for getting in touch with the, and getting that clarified by the Ethics Commission. I think that's always best practice. As most of the people in the room will not be surprised, education is only so large a universe, so people knowing each other is obvious, since you also have an internal candidate, is not unusual.
I have a question about that.
Yes, Ms. Mallett, please.
You have to actually file something with the town clerk that you, does that prevent us from voting, or just to do a visit?
Actually, I believe that it doesn't do either, although I'll defer to your colleague since she's the one who actually spoke with the Ethics Commission. Generally, it simply is so that everybody, effectively what she's saying is, I would just want everyone to know that this is something that is true about me and the relationship that I have with this individual. And effectively, the Ethics Commission then has also said that there isn't a conflict of interest in her actually moving forward.
I don't know. Did you answer my question? Because for me, you talk way too fast.
I'm sorry. So the...
Yes or no?
She can, she absolutely continues, can continue to participate in all aspects of the search, yes.
Okay. So I guess I have one, too, because one of the candidates is a friend and a former colleague.
Okay. It may be, again, I made the same, I made this recommendation because we, of course, we had, already had a little bit of this conversation because of being on the search committee. You may wish to do your own phone call to the Ethics Commission just because they will only give advice to the individual involved. I can't actually make those phone calls on anyone's behalf. You may just want to call them and say, sort of, here's the situation, and what is your recommendation? And their advice effectively is binding. Once they've said this is what you should do, then you're, as long as you follow it, then you've actually done your, done your job.
So there is an issue on the table that we don't have to deal with immediately, but it is the scheduling or providing dates and times that we're available. I have a feeling that this has been a very long meeting already. If you all feel like you have your dates at the ready and you want to provide them to Tracy now, all the better. I think if there's going to be some back and forth and deliberation, we're best to take it offline, email the dates and figure it out from there.
And Nick isn't present.
Correct.
Okay. So I will, I would be glad to send you all an email and simply say, sort of, you know, this is the week, let me know what your availability is. And then effectively, I then have the same conversation with the finalists. Now, the only question that I have in terms of the district is, who is it best for me to do the back, the communication with in terms of the central office, in terms of, obviously, we don't want to interrupt, we already, we're having so much conversation about testing, right? We know there are times where people can't be in buildings. Who is it best for me to work with, Madam Chair, in terms of that, do you think?
That's a good question. Lori?
Is Lori the best option? Thank you.
Thank you.
That is often the answer, I will say. As so often, the person who holds that seat is a, is very much a central node of the operation of the district. And so similarly, we'll have the same kind of, what days are just completely out the window and what days can we consider? And then we'll go from there. Obviously, principals will be deferring to you in terms of, you know, what is, what is absolutely not possible. I also will say, I already, I already did joke to at least one of the finalists that we are all sensitive to the fact that the 27th of February is everyone coming back from vacation and maybe we're not necessarily at our best, so maybe we don't necessarily want to do anything on that Monday. We'll do what we can. No one is looking to make anyone look anything other than their best, so. All right. So let me just make sure that I've got that down. The week of March 12th for interviews. And we'll be doing it February 27th through the March 3rd. All right. Are there any other questions that the committee has for me in terms of the process at this point? The only thing I would add, Madam Chair, is that I'm aware that you have a meeting again the end of February. What I might suggest is that, while I will not be able to be with you on, it's the 28th, I believe, while I won't be able to be with you on the 28th, what I would suggest is that you plan on putting on the agenda for that evening, development of the interview questions, because that is something that the Attorney General has found that you need to do in public session, as much as that may seem puzzling. And I can provide materials for you in terms of a question bank for you to consider. And something that you all may want to just be starting to think about is what do you want to make sure that you cover in those interviews? Obviously, we have some time before then, but just scheduling wise, that's a wise idea.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you.
So once again, I would just like to thank everyone who participated in the search committee, the thoughtful deliberation. It was a very committed and, I think, collaborative group. And once again, thank you to all of the finalists, of course, and also all of the applicants that expressed an interest in working here in Webster. We greatly appreciate it. The next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of the Bartlett High School 2023 to 2024 Program of Studies.
Hello, hello.
Hello, Mr. Collins.
So I brought Ms. Neves, our Assistant Principal, with us this evening, and I want to say publicly that she has made this a huge venture in her days previous to tonight to make sure that this allows for all students to have some equitable access to high-quality coursework and changing some of those courses, as I have delivered to you before in terms of our PLTW courses. And we've been working with many of our partnerships to get those courses in here. So you'll see with the changes, we did include to you all lists of the changes that we made to the previous Bartlett, excuse me, I almost said handbook, Program of Studies book. So you will know that I did update you about those courses. Most of the coursework that you'll see that's new does involve work with our Innovation Pathway. And there are quite a bit of changes. I don't know if you want us to go through each one or if you want to kind of guide through them. I know, I was, I was assuming that you might say no, Ms. Mallett, as a group, but I thought I'll, I will put that question out there to all four of you present this evening if you would like us to go through those. Some of those are generic things that we had to make changes, dates, names, things as such. And if not, we will let you call upon us for questions if you have them.
I was going to say, Kathy, I did hear you mention the numeracy skills earlier, that it was taken out, and I don't know if that had to go with the, this handbook. You took it out as a course, but we're going to add in...
Oh, the position. The position. Yeah.
We have a course that's numeracy skills and strategies, but we plan on building in more Tier 2 instruction within our every day, which is why you'll see that course is taken out because it's still our plan to put it in, but not as an official course.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
I guess I have a question. This is a huge undertaking, I'm sure. So do you have a committee of different people in the building that you do this with?
So the committee does consist of student services, who are our counselors and our support services, both around L and special ed and counselors, of course, on coursework.
Within each department, though, the ILTs, they're, and then they work with us as far as what they like, would like to see as far as things come off, things go in, and the whys, and how it would benefit the kids. So there's small committees that all lead up to, you know, me putting it in this book.
So then do the ILTs go back to their departments to talk about?
So they had, they had an opportu, an opportunity, excuse me, it's late in the day. They had an opportunity with about a month time span from ILT meeting to ILT meeting to sit with their staff and go over and create lists of courses that they historically have taught, courses they're currently teaching, and then courses they wish to teach. And then we will put them in the Program of Studies. They are all core, all courses are in there. For example, AP Physics, if you've ever had a student at the high school, it's only offered every other year. It allows for a junior or a senior to get it. You're not going to get it every year because we don't have the staff with smaller amounts of students to offer it every year. All courses are listed in this Program of Studies, even if they're new courses. But as I detail in the letter in the beginning, student registration will guide that process because we will have to offer courses that are the most requested before we offer smaller courses. If we have room in our schedule, as I talked a little bit about earlier, time is of the essence with our schedule, and we're really looking at what strategic scheduling should look like around staff in the needs and best interest of targeted skills for students. So we will be looking at quite a bit of remedial courses first, but then offering the high-level students, those extension level students that are coming to the table already above grade level, we want to make sure that we're equitably giving them the same amount of access. So that's why you'll see a lot of courses there that may not make it into our schedule for the 2024 school year, but that's only going to be based upon student registration needs.
That was my second question. Because you've inferred that you want to change in schedule at some point.
It's much needed for students.
Is that, I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, how does that impact your course of studies that you've already done?
Good question.
And if?
It impacts it quite a bit, right? And as you saw from the data tonight, with data being our number one indicator, it's important to look at what courses need to be offered for students. And I will draw your attention to some of the things, just as an example, Ms. Neves outlined this for you all this evening. There are courses that are, that target student populations for our special ed students, for example, comp English or comp math, allowing students four different levels of that course in four different years that are not the same course, not just sitting in Comp-ILA, the same course number, the same title for four years. Truly targeting those individuals and their needs, their academic needs, whether it's that indicator that you looked at tonight or it's an MCAT indicator, whatever that might look like, us changing that we are going to offer four levels of coursework, each designed to meet the grade level proficiency of grade nine, 10, 11, and 12, and then incorporating that into the special ed world. As well as our Ls, you'll see there that we made changes with them in terms of what our ELD, which is English Language Development courses, as we give them that introductory ideal, the introductory ideals around what it looks like to become proficient in the English language, but at the same time, offering those embedded supports so that they are meeting the needs of the grade level proficiency in grades nine through grades 12 in literacy. So that's what some of those changes look like. In terms of, to answer your question about the schedule, this is really going to guide our work with scheduling. And I believe that we will hold almost onto it, if I may steal the terminology, cling to it like a Bible. I feel like we might have to because we really have to guide students on what is best, especially as we look at our Innovation Pathways. They're completer courses, one leads to the next. So we need to hold students to that. But if you think about a student being college-ready, when you enter your freshman into college, they get a course of study for that subject area, and they'll refer back to that sheet and check that off in four years. Did I get this? Did I get this? Did I get this? And that's essentially what this is, and we've kind of lost that, here, let's refer back to what it is I want, those objectives and those goals, and what our vision looks like in terms of offering students platforms for post-high school success. So that's what I feel like these courses do. This is a living document, as all documents that any of the principals come forward, you know, to the committee with. So we will constantly look at this, but we're confident if you approve this tonight, we'll be able to go forward with our registration that starts in a week. And we will get into rising seniors down to rising 10th grade, and then we will go to Ms. Peterson's children and hit the rising 9th graders. And our hope, and I'll end with this, is to allow these courses to be a marketing tool, a branding tool, that we will be able to keep our students that Ms. Peterson and her staff have worked so hard to prepare at our schoolhouse here at Bartlett. So that's our big push.
I have another question. Because this is, I can't even imagine doing this. But say they pick courses now, but you don't know what your actual timeframe schedule's going to look like yet. How are they going to know if one course doesn't interfere with another course at a different time?
So that's all around strategic scheduling. I will tell you, that's the first thing on the, on the ground, so to speak, as the new principal here, that I found, is that there are some gaps, as we talked about gaps in learning. There were some gaps in how we scheduled for the best need of students and not for the needs of adults. And that's most important. And we will start from the lens of special ed and L first and foremost, and I will always schedule those students first, and then look at our high-needs populations and what students, what students need to become successful. But not only that, what students need to reach four years of 120 credits. No matter what our schedule comes out, and I'm, and I plugged a little bit tonight probably shamelessly, and that wasn't intentional, until after I said it, I was like, wow, that sounded like that. Because I will probably be sitting here in front of you talking about what does it look like for a schedule change? Because time on learning and getting more instructional time to students is how we're going to be able to remediate those gaps that we kind of unpacked this evening. But with that, no matter what, students are going to schedule for, for seven classes and two alternates. So that's nine courses. If we went to a block schedule, which we do have prepared to present in the next few weeks through the union and then through the school committee, we would require students to still take four classes fall semester, four classes in the spring, they've already registered for eight classes right there, and they get one alternate. If we are forced to stay on a seven-period 48-minute schedule or a 50-minute schedule per period, students are still scheduling for seven. And then if the computer kicks out because there's conflicts between an ELD course and a PLTW course, which I don't, I do not want that to happen for those students because I need the ELD kids and I need the special ed kids to have that platform to those courses to become career-ready, right? But I, so I probably should have picked a better example. But if that would happen, we would manipulate by hand over the summer what that schedule looks like, but the students will still be enrolled in eight classes and/or seven classes, however it looks. If we were to move to a schedule that was more of like that semester-based block scheduling, then it would actually give students a platform to earn 160 credits at the end of four years versus 120 that is required here in this booklet. Also, a data point to look at are student failures in the high school. We have a high level of student failures, and we have students who repeat courses, as you probably are aware of. And in four years, it, it seems daunting for some of our students to get through some of those heavy courses. This option with more time in front of them, no matter what schedule ends up happening, we will be able to provide students more opportunities to repeat courses, remediate them, and get that credit. Also, right, all the prayers and all the fingers crossed, that we would then increase the graduation rate naturally, because we have efforts in place to do that already. But that would allow students more intentional time to say, hey, I'm going to be able to re-enroll in this class and still graduate with my cohort on time in four years. And that's all of our hopes with this new Program of Studies. And really designing what students need and not what we've just taught because, but because of what students need. And so that's a real, that's a real, that's a real challenge, to be very frank here this evening, is to break mindsets that we're about what the children need, and this schedule and this Program of Studies needs to guide what they need. But we still also want to offer them those high-level quality courses that our teachers are capable of teaching as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? No. This is what we're here for. Mr. Collins, Ms. Neves, I'd like to compliment both of you and the team, of course, for the work that you did on this Program of Studies. It's clear that there was a lot of time and effort put into, you know, any necessary revisions and that type, and the scheduling and all of that. I think really well done. My only piece of feedback, and this is very minor, but I think it's important from a parent perspective. Mr. Collins, your letter is excellent, very well written to open up this Program of Studies. My very small thing is to spell out Project Lead the Way. You have PLTW, and I'm not sure all moms and dads are going to know what that means. Other than that, I don't have any other feedback other than really positive thoughts and feelings over here. If there are no further comments or questions about this Program of Studies, I'll entertain a motion to approve it with that one minor adjustment. Second. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion passes. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is approval of surplus items, outdated and damaged technology items and student desks. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you. In your packet, you should have a list of technology materials that are no longer operational. We've stripped them of parts and used them to the best of our capabilities. They are being surplus, so with your permission, we'd like to surplus them. And I don't know if you want me to review the other one and just do it as one motion?
Sure.
The other item is we have 175 student desks and 150 student chairs over at middle school. They have been stored in breakout rooms and then moved down to the gymnasium on two sides. They're taking up space. We've moved to different teaching models within the classrooms, we've gone to tables. And if you remember with our configuration, when we reconfigured grades, the desks that we have are too small in some cases for our 7th and 8th grade students, but we cannot use them at the elementary school because we already have the desks at the elementary school, and it doesn't fit with their current configurations. So really, they've just been taking up space and not being utilized. And this will still leave us with 70 additional desks and chairs to use for spares and items like that. So with your permission, we would like to surplus them.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee? So I will entertain a motion to declare surplus, the items that have been shared this evening that are in our packet from the Webster Middle School, and to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Mass. General Law 30B.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of interim superintendent. So as you all know, Dr. Gogan will be retiring, and her tenure will be ending prior to us naming a new superintendent for the Webster Public Schools. Therefore, we have a couple of... Therefore, we have a couple of options available to us. Some of them, well, Tracy Novick will review them, but they basically really include probably two options, which would be appointing an interim superintendent from our current central admin team or soliciting an interim superintendent from the number of retired superintendents that MASCE has available to them. So for this evening, I'll hand it over to Tracy, and maybe you can just walk us through this process.
Sure. And so as some of you may even remember back when we had an initial conversation way back, I think it was October, about this, one thing that Massachusetts is, has actually a wealth of is experienced educators who are prepared to step in for short-term superintendencies. So I sort of say that to say, as much as, you know, February, I'm sure is sort of draining away before our eyes, that this is not something where you need to feel that you're at short shift. You also, of course, have a very strong central office with experienced educators, experienced administrators, who are, who also meet the qualifications. So much like we told you when you were doing your initial conversation about your search, the two things that the school committee has to do in appointing an interim is you have to do it in a public meeting where everybody knew that you were going to vote, and you have to appoint someone who is actually licensed as a Massachusetts superintendent. That's it. So how you choose to proceed is really entirely up to you. I will just add a bit, Madam Chair, that something that the committee should keep in mind, but also the district should keep in mind, is that you are going through a significant transition, and one thing that the committee has already been doing an excellent job at, but that is particularly important in these transition times, is that, you know, the committee is sort of, is working together in public, has a unified vision in terms of how you're moving forward. There is some degree to which both you and I will need to be working with the rest of the administration as we sort of move through these transitions. Already, we're talking a little bit about scheduling in terms of visits, but in terms of these next series of transitions, something that I think that's important for everyone to keep in mind is that a collaborative, strong working relationship between the committee and the administration, right down through the schools, is really, I think, one of the things that's most important in these times of transitions. And I'm happy to take any questions you have, Madam Chair. Effectively, what I would say is that, again, you have another meeting in February before you are moving in a different direction, and what I would be interested from you this evening is if you would wish me to go sort of do some homework and come back to you with potential exterior interims, or if it is that the committee would feel that they are blessed for choices, so to speak, internally and perhaps don't need me to do that.
So just to paraphrase Tracy, this evening, we'll be deciding whether we'll be bringing an interim into the district from outside or looking for someone from inside the district to cover on an interim basis.
Certainly, and as you know, you're not posted for a vote, but really, this is just you either giving me an assignment or not, really.
Mm-hmm. I'll open it up to the committee if there are comments, questions, or desires.
Through the chair. So I think, given further transition, I personally would like to look internally. We have an amazing group at Central Office, as Tracy alluded to, and I, I think, you know, that that's the way that I would like to see it go, obviously open to everybody else's opinion, thoughts.
Through the chair.
So how do we know, because I agree, I think if we, there is somebody internal that's
the, we should go for the interim superintendent, but how do we know, one, who has that licensure, and two, is interested?
So licensure is publicly available information. You actually can look people up right on the department's website. I think not everybody actually knows that, but it's a handy thing that the department does. So that's actually something the committee can actually easily, easily gather yourself. Something that I would suggest is that if you're sort of heading in that direction, that that would be something where you effectively deputize the chair just to have an unofficial conversation offline, to make sure that you're not sort of moving forward with a decision on the 28th that's going to be met with anything other than consternation. But I, I think that you have a, you know, as I said, you definitely do have a strong team here that, you know, is, is prepared to keep sort of sailing forward regardless anyway, and is heavily involved in a lot of the work that you're doing in any case.
So that obviously would involve me or somebody from the committee having some conversations with the members of the district admin team?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And as long, again, as long as you're doing that individually and then are coming back to the committee on the 28th, saying, you know, I've had these conversations, and this is where this has left us, that's entirely fine. Just make sure that you would be posted on the 28th for a vote for an interim, interim.
And if nobody wants it?
Yep.
Is, on the 28th, can we say we need to go the route of an external interim?
Yep.
Candidate?
Yes.
Maybe we would do that, if I have conversations, I'll do that with you?
I was going to say, I think that if you find that you, that you're being met with, with less than positive responses, then that's something where you can get in touch with me, and I can make sure that you have that information available for you on the 28th.
Okay.
And I will say, that's one where we can have the sort of, you know, we're not talking about people who have to leave current positions and have to negotiate with school committees. We're talking about people who, whose time is already their own. So it's more a question of when would you want them and what would the arrangements be?
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Any other discussion about this? Ms. Blythe shared her, her thoughts. Never Adam, Ms. Miller?
I totally agree that I would prefer somebody in-house.
Okay. So we just need a motion to? I don't know that it's a vote. Is it a vote?
You don't, because really, you're saying you don't, you don't need me to do anything.
So we don't need a motion to just let the chair go ahead and, and discuss?
You don't.
Okay.
Because you're not, you're not making an official decision at that point. You're asking her to go do some homework and bring it back to you.
Thank you.
And, and I, as always, am entirely reachable, certainly by you, as well as the rest of the committee, if there's additional work that I need to do.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Great.
So I think we won't need that service at the moment.
All right.
We'll be in touch.
That will limit the number of emails that I need to send all of you.
Thank you. And thank you, Tracy, for joining us once again and spending the evening with us. It's been a long one. The next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
In fact, what I'll do is I'll leave it, I'll just simply include it in the email that I'm sending to all of you tomorrow.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.